Good evening. It is seven o'clock and I'm going to go ahead and start the April 25th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. I'm Lisa Ellsworth, the Chair of the Commission. May we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Allison.
Here.
Commissioner Corney.
Here.
Commissioner Bravo.
Here.
Commissioner Berlin.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Chair.
Here.
Oh.
All right. Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So I see that we have minutes in our packet. Has everybody had a chance to review them? And do we have any corrections, additions, or changes? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Nope. Okay. So do we have any business from the audience to discuss anything that is not otherwise on the agenda tonight? I see we have people online, but I don't know that we have anybody that wants to speak.
I've seen anyone online speaking.
Okay, thank you. In that case, go ahead and start with communications.
I don't have any additional communication.
Okay. In that case, I would like to start the work session regarding Legislative Amendment LA 24-02 regarding food cart pads or pods. Do we have?
You can handle our plan, going to walk us through.
Thank you.
Going to walk us through again. I think it's pretty brief, give an update as to where we left off, some comments and considerations we had about last year, a little bit of feedback that we received.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have too many slides for you. I just wanted to circle back on some of the discussion points we had a couple of weeks One item we talked about, mobile food services. This was the idea, or the tank of food cart that would kind of travel around, stopping at various places for a short period of time and then moving on. Originally, it was proposed at two hours per location. Based on the feedback we got, as well as some, just kind of looking at that definition again, I tweaked the definition so now it doesn't even talk about an hour or a time limit. And then under the Business Operations rules, I've increased that to four hours. I think that was what we had talked about two weeks ago, as more, a little more realistic, yeah, or a lunch hour, and then a little bit of a break, and then we could go somewhere else for dinner, or return to the same spot. That was the only change for that part.
Can you go back one?
Yeah, absolutely. Interrupting.
Can that remain at one stop along its route for more than four hours? But do we have a timeframe in that, in a day, in a 24-hour period? As opposed to for the entire year, for life?
Square of a minute, absolutely. The next topic we had a discussion about was the special events section. And it became pretty apparent that it needed to be presented in a different manner, that was a little more clear. So I'm hoping this does it. And if we need to tweak it some more, absolutely. The content has pretty much stayed the same. It's just presented in an easier way to understand. So there's three types of special events that someone could apply for a special event This is a single event, so up to three days, you know, a weekend event, Tasty Woodburn, sixty mile, things like that. We have a recurring event, one day per week, up to thirty-six weeks. Classic example here would be a farmer's market on Saturday. And then a seasonal event, something that's Thanksgiving, Christmas, July 4th. Typically, we see more in holidays, but. So those would be thirty consecutive days per event, and each site could have up to two seasonal events per year. So that's actually a change from what we talked about two weeks ago, and it matches more in line with what our current code is. So last meeting, we talked about a one event for up to sixty days, and some of the feedback we got was that sixty days is kind of long for an event, for a seasonal event. So this reverts it back to what our current code is. And still limited, two per calendar year. So it's still total sixty days, but each event is only. And then, looking at the permitted uses for what these special events can be, seasonal sales, talked about fireworks, Christmas trees, produce and flowers and things like that. Entertainment, rides, games, concerts, that type of thing. Merchandise and services. The main change, excuse me, main change here is that food carts are called out specifically in the packet that you got mailed out a week ago. It has it permitted only as a single event or a recurring event. Staff has chatted a little bit more this week about that. And just to make sure that a food cart could not take advantage of this, and say, I'm only going to come in one day a week at this point, that's the same problem we're having right now. So the change we're recommending here, it'll be in the version that moves forward to the current, assuming you all are favored by just permitting it only as a single event.
Just kind of big picture, this is, except for that yellow phrase that's in here, this is very close to the way we currently regulate special event permits, which work out well. You know, there's more to the event permit than this. Separate applications, this might be about a hundred and eighty dollars, you know, more in there that we charge, we turn them around pretty quickly, we get a fire department review. If they have a road closure, we do a road closure permit, gets it like works, PD, et cetera. So we cover all those bases. What's really different here, and why it's important for the food cart component, just to reiterate what we've gotten, what's been happening for the past few years is that yellow clause in here that says, here's when food carts are limited during a special event, doesn't exist in our current. So they've been allowed with any specialty, which has meant they've been allowed, frankly, linger for a long period of time at locations. It's quote, unquote, "A special event that occurs, say, every third event day of the month, and it stays all year." It's problematic, it's something we're trying to move around, but we don't want to limit and prohibit food carts from taking place with the best. We think this catch is a pretty simple way, but that clarifies what's actually been.
Hoping things are a little clearer. Are your concerns addressed with how it was reading prior to this? Loveless. Okay. Good to hear.
Yep. I just want to close that loop of, oh, we're just going to be here for thirty-six weeks.
Right.
Go home for a week and come back for another thirty-six.
Definitely. There's always that, we're not changing anything in there. I assume when the city about eight years ago or so made the decision to allow marijuana dispensaries in certain locations, they put this very specific clause, avoid someone from opening up temporary marijuana sales, operation as part of a special event permit.
Right.
So I'm sure that's why I said we're just going to leave.
And that's actually not unusual in some locations.
I've seen trucks that they sell edibles and candies and, yeah. I'm thinking around food. Okay. On to food cart pods themselves, some of the tweaks that occurred based on feedback from our last meeting. Commissioner Bravo, I believe it was you who brought the comment about potentially obstructing sidewalks and customers are, you know, forming a line or waiting for their food, how would that impact the street or sidewalk? So I've added language to address that as part of our review when this comes in. We talked about propane versus natural gas, and ultimately fell on, let's just make it clean, safer, go with the natural gas route.
And this is just for the pods right now for like a special event?
That's correct.
Yeah. So we've added language to recognize the propane tanks. We talked about parking requirements for a bit at our last meeting. Initially, what was proposed was one and a half stalls per cart, and that was the minimum. And our code right now gives you a maximum of twice the minimum, so it's a range, one and a half to three. And feedback we got from the commission last meeting was, that wasn't quite enough. So I did some more research, and one thing I found from the City of Salem code that made a lot of sense to me was they have a per cart ratio, but they also look at structures. If you have a bar, a restroom, you know, other amenities on site, they add a parking requirement to that structure as well. So I've increased the minimum ratio to two cart installs per cart, and then an additional one stall for two hundred feet of building area. And that actually matches where our ratio is for the standing restaurant. It's one for two hundred.
And did we remove the maximum? Because it was hard for a pod to grow if it's based on who's their opening day versus who's their three years from there.
Part of what we would look for in an application would be, how many units are you creating? Because they'll have to plumb utility connections out to them. So I think we would operate with the assumption that it would be full. In parking design, you know, for, say, a six cart department, pod, where to come in and get approved. We have this minimum requirement of per six carts. They can double that, they need to need a lot more. Would you be stuck twenty? I would agree with it, they had a separate seating here, like a separate building.
So in a manufactured home park, they build the park and they have a pad, because we've got it now where it says per cart. What you're saying to me is you're measuring how many proposed pads they're going to have.
Yes. One thing I've come across is carts can be different sizes. You can have a small trailer or a huge truck. So one of the challenges, if you go the route of looking at just total square footage, it's kind of hard to think ahead of, okay, when you're going through a review for a new food cart pod, you might not have all of the tenants already figured out inside their carts, so it would just be a little bit more challenging to look at square footage.
Yeah, I'm not thinking about square footage, but I'm thinking about per hookup, per pad, because when it says per cart, that's assuming that it will be full on day one. So I don't know that that has to be changed, but.
That is the intent, is what we.
As long as somehow we understand that that's the intent. Because I know, a lot of times when you open this market, you've got three carts to start, and then six months later, you've got five, and then, and so forth. So if the intent is per hookup or per available cart space, per planned cart space, something like that.
Yeah. Maybe changing the cart, or car, or hookup, same. And now you're right, that is the intent.
That is the intent.
That's what they're going to pay their SDCs off of.
And that allows them to start and grow, but still has the appropriate amount of parking and.
If they wanted to come back and expand, there would be more, because each one of those would need its own utility connection. So there would be additional permitting. EV parking, by just like any other commercial development. And that was about it for changes. One item that we talked about briefly, the landscaping requirements. For food cart pods specifically, we've added in some language that would allow these decorative planters to be used instead of in the ground planting like we normally do. Considering how much paved area that would be on site. And I think at our last meeting, there was a little bit of uncertainty about how big these actually were. So I just wanted to show a couple of examples. This half barrel is about, it's a little over two feet wide and about a foot and a half tall. That would be one plant unit. It's fifty gallon length up. Then, example, this is up in Orient City, it's an existing pod, and you can see, oh, right along the sidewalk, they have all these planter boxes. So that's just kind of in practice what it might be.
And I'm just reading through your code, page 131, see if I'm using that. Again, generally speaking, how do you, what kind of landscape requirements do we have for these? And come up with, I'm just going to read the feedback of this plant unit. And that's just how our code regulates landscape requirements. It works out pretty well, gives a lot of flexibility to provide different types of landscape. Do we define certain, you know, how tall a tree is planted, or how big it's going to be, it's more units than a small tree. And so the way you prep it up here, it's require landscaping, food carts, we provide a minimum of ten plant units per cart. Just to give you that idea, as you were saying, if you're measuring, this is a new concept, this new little planting, you can't do this anywhere else in the city for a company, for fricking water facilities. But for these, just because of their nature, the idea we would develop something. So based on the feedback being got from the last time, this idea that twenty-five gallon planters, essentially one plant unit, and a big fifty-one would work too. They don't have to use that, they can use any other kind of structure you do, you know, and get out better than five of these, how they can utilize that as part of.
Is the parking, and is that a building that's serving food to, or?
In this particular site, I believe the parking is often, right?
Yeah.
And that's their theater?
It's on the other side. Beer garden.
That's like the beer garden is inside. Yeah, that building. Do you have anything in ours about fire pits, you know, anything like that, that would be addressed?
If it was propane, it would be.
I kind of left it intentionally not in there to allow creative design from applicants. But there is an argument to have it come towards the wind, that's when it's wrong.
I mean, what if they wanted one, then?
Yeah, we can have a prohibition, you know, you can have an outdoor patio seat here for their kind of fire. You need your whatever you have.
Yeah, but I thought it was more of a, you know, these propane, we're not allowing in the carts, but we'll be okay with propane as a source for the private.
Yeah, we don't have any, nothing in here, it's, this is how the carts, you know. We have that scenario someplace, we probably have outdoors, not parks, propane, either.
No, I'm just, I'm just looking through.
Yeah, we have some here.
I also wanted to check in with the commission on process, just to make sure we're on the same page for how we move forward. So if this were to ultimately be adopted by the city council, what we have proposed here is that a new food cart pod would come in as a type-two design review. So for type-twos, that's an administrative decision. It does involve a mailed notice that we would send out to property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of the site. And the city council would have placed on their next meeting as a kind of briefing of the decision. So they would have the opportunity to call it up for review and so forth, but that means PC would not see these, unless it was variance or some other, I guess, if it was part of the PD or something.
Just a check, because again, I think it's moving along well, but hate for it to come back and say, hey, someone just came in with what it says, why didn't we see it? The idea is that these standards are clear and objective enough that someone could come in here and have the extra step, and certainly we did a lot of that.
If they wanted to expand an existing one, that would be even lower than type-one. One of the main reasons I wanted to have this third work session was also to have an opportunity to send this out to various stakeholders in the community to see if we could get any We met with the Downtown Business Association, Chris did, was that on Tuesday?
I did. Maybe, I see people are still wants to comment. There's no formal testimony portion in the meeting, it's a work session, but now my duty of time, if someone had some comments, testimony, check in with them, we can give you some more of it, and other testimony, literally, if you receive it, so we can have that as a reaction.
Is there anybody online that would want to give feedback?
There were a few folks here, we don't have to speak.
Okay.
Oh, we have a pool house.
Carol, line back.
If anybody would like to come off mute and address the planning commission, you're welcome to do so right now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Oh, I was just observing. So you guys are good to go, and Dan's microphone sounds like he's underwater, and I have to turn the volume way up. But thank you for your meeting. I'm going to mute myself now.
That got any better?
It doesn't actually sound like the microphone's on for either you or Chris. I can hear the rest of the commission just fine, but for Chris and Dan, it's really, it sounds like you're at some distance.
All right, I'll shift to another.
Okay, I don't see that anyone else has come off mute. So please continue, Dan.
While he's walking over, I can do sort of a lead-in. So we have a Downtown Business Association, and I gave them sort of a quick summary of this. We introduced the kind of food cart pod idea to them, the fact that we were going to be doing some legislative changes, wanted to get kind of feedback from them. This is just a general temperature of them, I don't, can't speak for complete specificity for everything that came up. But when we spoke to them about a month ago, it was pretty well-received. I think it was a good understanding, yes, we wanted to see something happen, shared concerns about ones that have sort of popped up and seem a bit unregulated, and I think there was support for having some more regulation of them, but support for seeing them occur and kind of allowing them in town legally. Is that about right, Dan?
They were not wanting to see them be able to park on street parking, just operate on the sidewalk. They wanted to save that for their potential customers.
So I came back and met with them again earlier this week, just kind of popped in, let them know where we were, give them some details as to what kind of this body had worked through. Generally speaking, there was very little detailed discussion about, you know, whether or not it was an issue with gas lines or propane or the landscape requirements and that sort of nature. There was, there were some concerns raised about having them right downtown, right? The idea that it might suck away from the existing restaurants and bars that we have down there and kind of siphon off some of the traffic. Didn't get much more than that. What I told them, and again, their real issue, a hundred percent, almost unanimous, was concerns about basically code violations. People that park illegally and just open up and set up shop almost from the street, which isn't allowed, and that's more of a code issue that we try to get on. It's good feedback to have, doesn't really impact this, these aren't, these would be legal operated food trucks, the ones that tend to happen, whether they're selling food or other merchandise, it's just illegal and they'd like to see it sort of stopped. And we agree, we can have a conversation with our PD about how we sort of enforce that a little bit better. But there was concern about the fact that a food cart pod could open up literally downtown and have twelve carts in it, as opposed to a new stick, new brick and mortar restaurant. It was a pretty understandable concern. What I said to them, I kind of took a little bit of that in, and that wasn't unanimous among them, I thought I'd just pass that on. What I did say was, we'll get some more details, and I thought it'd be good, Dan's going to go back to them again before our public hearing, so we'll get some more feedback, and this time we'll kind of get into a little bit more of the meat and potatoes of what they were looking at. Generally speaking, again, what I heard was, this is a great idea everywhere, but we have real concerns about its impact downtown, if it's right next to our restaurants. Very reasonable concern, and it came up.
However, there's not a lot of open spaces that would allow for it.
There aren't too many. I foolishly mentioned the Pix Theater, so I probably stuck my foot in my mouth when I said, man, that's what I think. I said, right there would be a wonderful spot. Now, of course, that's, we're not proposing one, that's city-owned property, and there's a hundred other things, but, but sometimes people hear an idea and they think, I like it conceptually, and then when there's the feeling that, oh my goodness, there might be twelve competing restaurants across a hundred feet from me that don't have to provide a restroom, right, or pay SDCs, or get any building permits? Or pay SDCs or get any building permits. I think that kind, it just sank a little bit differently. Perfectly healthy and reasonable. So we're going to go back, show them some pictures of what we envision these to look like, what these look like in terms of formal hookups that they're getting, landscape requirements, paving requirements, some of the things that we're putting in.
Restroom requirements.
Right, and we'll see what we get. We'll see what kind of feedback we get and we'll make sure we give it to you. And I encourage them to come down and give us any more feedback if they had it. So we might get more, I hope we do. And we'll definitely have some more specific comments from them before your hearing.
I think it's pretty reasonable to say that the planning commission had very many of the same concerns.
Oh, yeah, that was nice.
It's a real issue, right? It's a, it's a concern.
Are there business associations in the other part of town? I mean, is that all thing with, you know, well, that's great, but I don't want it.
I will. And Dan can speak to some of that for a second.
I spoke with the executive director for the Chamber of Commerce, which is kind of citywide and a little bit regional. But spoke to him, let's see, earlier today and about a week ago. So I checked in on him today. He shared it with several colleagues that were interested in the topic. And he got generally good feedback or folks were supportive of the idea. He didn't have any concerns to pass along to me though, at this time. Many operators do have that. If, or like a manager of a pod, they do look for kind of a diversity of cuisines offered.
Dan can walk through some of the other items. And that's not on the list, but so I meet with our economic development team and we have quarterly, I think it is, industrial roundtable meetings where we meet with all the, sort of the major employers around town, probably 15 or so. We discuss all sorts of issues. This is one of the things that came up and kind of walked them through. As you can imagine, there is, they love having the, the trucks that can come in and serve them as the one off thing. They want to make sure that was still available. Probably a good idea that we kind of bumped that from two hours to four hours. I like that because some of that's sort of the, the shift in. For some of the bigger employers, they sometimes roll that kind of long lunch shift so they can constantly have people working. So that was pretty well received. But I didn't receive any negative comments about the food cart pod. It was great, sounds good. Every other city has one, why don't we? The gist.
So we have a city email, the e-blast that goes out every Friday. So it was kind of top of the list last week. I, I had one email come in to me earlier this week from an individual. I think it was in response to the e-blast, but I tried to follow up with them. They didn't provide very much information in their email. So I haven't heard back yet, but very enthusiastic individual about this, wanted to be involved. I'm assuming it was for this food cart pod topic. There's an Oregon Mobile Food Association. I believe they're up in Clackamas, but they represent the whole state. Reached out to them several times and never heard back. I thought that was kind of surprising. Because they're, they're on the, the operator of the food cart themselves. They work with folks to start their own business and find events that they can participate in, things like that. So they have a good feel for some of the kind of working challenges that cart operators go through. And then, let's see, also sent this. So John, Mr. John Stromquist was our guest speaker at our first work session. Sent it to him as well as another food cart pod developer down in West Salem. Heard back from gentleman in West Salem today. He was very supportive, didn't have really any concerns about the language in here that we're proposing. He did have a question about how we look at traffic. Specifically what type of trip counts are tied to this particular use. Definitely not something we would cover in this zoning code here. That's more of a traffic engineering problem that gets worked out as part of their application. So that is a topic that we'll need to do some research in as we start getting ready for a potential first pod. But otherwise he was very supportive.
Should we be looking for somebody to develop the whole? I think to me that if we can get somebody.
Right, that's generally what, like, so like the corner 14 picture that I showed just a few minutes ago. That is a central manager that did the development and now manages it.
From Westland. We, we fully expect that to be the case because someone needs to make that initial investment in the property.
Right.
I'll talk to you about it. You know, would the city have any interest in that?
I think that's a great idea. There's grant money available for, there's grant money available for small business development for communities trying to do that. And Jesse Cuomo is an awesome grant writer. So I'm.
I've had a conversation with him, yeah.
As I said, you go one from Halsey.
Mm-hmm.
Part four connected. I love that the city did that and they increase the benefits and help a lot of small businesses get started and there's funds. If we want it done right, it would be better to do it than.
Yeah.
Was it Gresham or Portland?
It was out in Gresham. But Halsey, right, we got near Gresham.
The city.
The city leased the property from the property owner and developed it. And then he assigned a manager to do it and it's beautiful. And so now it's.
It's got this massive fork.
It's got a massive fork. The biggest one that they're trying to break the Guinness World Record. So it's called a fork. But it's done beautifully. That's where my idea came in.
Yeah.
Because I thought that was neat that it was also serving the community, having people start up the street of theirs. And it's just a good thing for the city.
The, the short answer to that is there's nothing in here that's, would prohibit the city from doing it. I don't want to speak for the city or the city council or the, you know, redevelopment agency to say, yes, this is the kind of thing we want to undertake. I agree with you, lots of cities do. There's all kinds of positives and it's always the, if you really want to do it right and you want it done your way, then right. You do it right. You want it done right, you own it. That's the way it needs to always be done for cities. This is written for either to happen. City wanted to build it, essentially we'd meet these same requirements as it should be. And we could always go beyond, right? These are minimum requirements that we have set up. I'm quite certain this discussion will come up at the city council meeting when this topic comes up.
I talked to Frank.
There may even be one watching on right now, but I'm not certain. I thought, I thought I saw a counselor on.
He knows I'm very passionate, but I talked to him about it too, just because I think that if we wanted that right, it'd be nice to keep it within our community. Because I think once this passes, we are going to have out of town, probably people with the buckets who will want to. These are very successful usually and so. But I think it takes a group efforts of being like, well, we should look at that. If we, I just don't know how to.
Yeah.
Happy to pass on your, if there's a unanimous decision when we vote on the language to say that the planning commission also thinks the city running one would be a great idea. If you are also inclined, I can certainly pass that on to them. They'll get that message.
I'm laughing because it wasn't that long ago that we sold all our excess property.
There are lots of options.
Like the armory.
Property. Exactly. You can always lease property back, right? There's, the city has a lot of options they can do. Dan, real quick, just because he knows this better than me, and it's, I think it's a good reminder as we think of what this could mean for kind of opportunities of future. How many food cart special event permits do you think we've issued in the last three years?
I'd say probably 10 to 15.
Okay, and how many do you think we've sort of turned down? Who come in and look for them and say, where? What we usually get is, I don't really have a place, but I had, I have a truck and where can I open it up? Right, and that's where it starts. And then they need to find a property owner, then they meet our requirements and they have to work through whatever leasing arrangement they have with a property owner. Who don't, they don't take the next step, they don't move any further. Again, if the option was, well, there's a, either city one run right here or we know that there's two others here. There's one on the east side, one on the west side. Maybe they have different leases, different requirements, whatever. It'd be nice to point them in that direction. And then they have an exact place to go. They can drive in and hook up. They don't even have to talk to us. Now they can just come in and get set up if there were such a food cart pod already ready. I think that's interesting.
So I'm really surprised by that number. And maybe that's, let me ask the questions. When we have Fiesta Mexicana, don't those vendors have to apply for?
I'm sure he wasn't talking about those. He's talking about the one off in an individual location.
Because I'm thinking, you know, we have several events like the Fiesta.
Oh, and they're full of.
Taste of comfort.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of pent up demand. I believe that's the case.
And I think that's what we're trying to really support with this. Both the pods and those events so that our community understands it is safe to go to them, that they are regulated and that we are looking after health and safety and cleanliness and things like that. So, yeah, there's more food carts at events than just the one offs.
Right, oh, absolutely.
And I think we are, maybe I'm speaking for myself, but I'm, I'm thinking we are wanting to encourage the food trucks at events or a food truck pod and discourage or disallow to a degree the one offs that you're talking about. Okay.
Yeah, the only other slide I had was just.
You're on mute.
He's back at the, there we go, there we go. Just bringing us back up to speed where we're going.
Yeah, just to let you know, tentatively, assuming everything is up to what you were hoping it would be. We could move forward to a public hearing at our second May meeting. And that would be a recommendation to city council. And then from there, that would be about a month later at their second June meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do it, sounds great.
Great.
All right.
It's gone very quickly and smoothly, actually. I'm surprised.
Yeah, I think.
But we have another public hearing coming up, so let's see what happens.
I think you did a good job on, on writing this.
Oh, thank you.
Can I ask a related question? I read through, trying to find it. What it, how does this affect things like the ice cream trucks that go through the neighborhood? There's six or seven of them all the time and I, they're moving all the time unless somebody's standing there buying one. But I didn't know if they would be governed by some of these new rules or if that's completely separate.
That is a great question. Right now, our code is already set up to allow these types of kind of constantly moving food services like ice cream trucks. We call it just delivery services is how they're called out in the development ordinance. Already allowed in every zone, even residential. And basically they just have to keep moving to a different location every 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
They are.
Aren't they supposed to be really? Does it get under your skin?
I hear them here. They're, they're around here during the workday. After the 35th time of hearing that song, it starts to get a little. We do have noise ordinances. I'm sure.
They're under the same ordinance that we regulate those is where, where it would get caught. But I think that wrapped up the, sort of this portion of the work session.
Yeah, thank you all. Appreciate the feedback through this and I think it's going really, really smoothly. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the business for the commission? Do we have any business for the commission?
I do not have anything else. I need to hear from anyone here.
Do any commissioners want any, want to say anything? Or do we have any updates?
I was going to do a brief update on sort of the upcoming meetings.
Okay.
And this time I have my schedule right, I messed it up last time. There will not be a May 9th meeting for the planning commission, but we will have a May 23rd. That's the one Dan was just discussing. Definitely this legislative item will be on there. It's a formal hearing, we'll go through the hearing process. We'll have to make a formal recommendation that will go to the city council at that time. And there might be a small quasi judicial item. We have a couple of smaller things kind of working through that I'm certain could go on the same hearing as that. It wouldn't be, they won't be very time consuming. And as I mentioned, the only other kind of more public items coming in is we have a couple of gas stations that are working their way through the system. Those are probably going to get a lot of public testimony, one of them for certain. One's going to come in June, the other's probably pushing out to July, August. One of them's essentially on the north side of 211, on the other north side, across from the Safeway, a little bit to the east, right in between those new, those new residential apartments. And the other's at the old bank building sites in Oregon Way. Oregon Way and 214.
I'm kind of surprised that they want to push the one for my Safeway. There's already a gas station in Safeway.
There's one right across the street. Yeah. So that, again, they, they both re, or the, one of them received a lot of testimony previously and went through the system. So I'm just expecting a crowd. I doubt, I'll try not to have, unless I'm forced to do it for some clock reason, under the statutory requirements, to have the one that's going to be crowded on its own that night. So we can try to get through testimony. And I do expect testimony at that. I don't have a date for it yet, it's probably July. They aren't the same owner, but they're the same, what are they called? The, who's the blue?
Service station.
Space Age? Space Age is the?
US market.
What do you, a US market, pardon me, US market is the same. But they're actually different owners, different property owners, everything about them is different, except that name that'd be in front, which can change over time, of course.
But is it the same one that applied before?
It is.
It is?
It is. That's correct, the one on Oregon Way we saw before. That's why I expect to see a crowd. All right.
And again, no ex parte communication.
Yes, please don't have any, it's, thank you for the reminder again. If, when they get closer, you'll probably, there's some folks coming up to you asking about it. Or chance you can't just defer them, send them here. They're, we want to hear them here at this hearing so that you can all hear at the same time. And legally, the applicant can hear everything they have to say too, that's legally required. That's it. That was all I had.
I actually have a question for Chris, the, our attorney. When it comes to ex parte conversations and contact, I understand that the email, face to face, phone call. Where do things like social media and Facebook fall?
Is that working?
Nope.
We're working on it. This, had a little problem with this Monday night too.
And ours are really working.
Yours are very powerful tonight, oddly enough.
Do you want to sit here, Chris?
All right, there we go. So those would fall in, they would also fall into ex parte communication. So you want to avoid at least certainly initiating those conversations. Obviously, if somebody posts something to your Facebook page or something like that, you can, there's nothing you can do about the fact that they posted it there, but you don't want to engage with that conversation.
I was thinking more along the line, and thank you for that part. I was also thinking along the lines, if we have a wood burn community posting, right? And when things like this come up, people just chat and, you know, you're flipping through it. Should we not be flipping through it?
I mean, my recommendation would be to, to avoid that, yes.
Okay.
Happy to avoid it, thank you very much.
You want to try and, basically the, the idea is to try and make sure that all of your discussions, all of your deliberations, all of your thought processes around whatever the application is, that's happening in a meeting where there's a quorum, where there's the opportunity for public viewing and public comment and all of that.
And would that be the same for newspaper articles?
Well, newspaper, I mean, that's, that is public information. So to the extent that. that, you know, it's out there in the public and you see it or you view it, that's information that's available to you. And that public information is probably not something that's going to color your decision necessarily one way or another. But nevertheless, my general advice would be to just, to the extent that there is something that is coming in front of planning commission, limit your, your discussions about it and your deliberations about it, certainly, to actual meetings.
It's interesting, if, I've had situations, extremely political land use decisions that come up. And I've seen, you know, where there's lots of op-eds. Of course, people don't, there aren't many newspapers anymore, people don't even write op-eds. But they used to write them when I was a young'un. And there'd be a lot of them. I've actually put them into the record and just dropped them into the, to the, to the, everybody's seen this, but I want to make sure in case this counselor or this commissioner didn't read that, but everybody else did, and they're thinking, wow, you know, Walmart's the worst place in the world because I read that they treat their workers terribly, right? They might be skewing someone's record. So I, I've put them out there before. And it was, it was just a, an extra precaution. An interesting thing to keep in mind is, this isn't a bad thing about attorneys, but I fully expect that the, the representatives for these two gas stations are going to be represented by legal counsel, who are going to be looking for any kind of procedural issues that might come up. Shouldn't be. But we try to be extra careful when it's more controversial.
Just always be thinking to yourself, what's going to be fair, what's going to be open to the public? And then, of course, if you have any questions, feel free to email me. I'm always available to you for that.
All right. Anything else?
Oh, ex parte?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right up there.
One of the, I didn't bring in the BOR experiment using it, but there's an opportunity before the hearing, and you should, when in doubt.
Spit it out.
Make the declaration.
Right. Just make, just say, hey, by the way, I'm friends with so-and-so, but we didn't discuss this. And as long as that's true, and you say, in no way will impact my ability to make this decision, I'm not swayed one way or the other, I'll make my decision based on the facts presented here, then that's fine. Not saying it'll be a problem, because some attorney will say, I know that those guys are best friends and they play poker every night, right? And it had to come up. And that, you don't want that. We don't ever want that appearance.
And the audience gets the opportunity then. So the chair always asks the audience at that point, does anybody want to challenge the, the ex parte declaration? So if there was someone online or in the room who planned at that point to, like, put into the record that they had an issue with that ex parte communication, then that would be their opportunity to do so at that point.
All right. Well, if we don't have anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor, aye? Aye?
Aye.
All right. I didn't hear any opposed. So I'll call the meeting.